Can I have the council members come up, please? Council members. I'd like to welcome you to our February 15th City Council meeting. We will start with our opening that will be provided to us by Councilmember Michelle Barber.
Our Heavenly Father, we are thankful to be gathered here as a city and residents and representatives, and we're thankful for the wonderful area that we live in and the people that we were able to be surrounded by and serve and be uplifted by. We pray for our ability to work well together and to be at the foremost with our gratitude for the many blessings that we have, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right. We will start. Do we have any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Okay. Seeing none. Okay. No consent items for tonight. All right. We will start with item 4A, preliminary plat approval for the Preserve subdivision located at approximately 150 South Angel Street. And we'll turn that over to, is that Andy? Thank you.
We recently went through a rezone process, rezoned this property to the R1 LD zone. They've now submitted preliminary plat. Property's located down off of Angel Street and just south of 200 North as highlighted here. They submitted preliminary plat. The lots all conform to the R1 LD zone. The density conforms to that. It meets all the requirements of a preliminary plat with the one concern that the Planning Commission expressed. The staff has some concern as well. See, there's four cul-de-sacs, three very long ones together. There's concern about if that meets the intent of providing for circulation, adequate access in the subdivision. The Planning Commission reviewed it and felt that it did not meet that requirement, so they recommended disapproval of the preliminary plat. Symphony Homes has held off on bringing this to the City Council for some time as they reviewed it. I believe they've, they did add a couple of pedestrian trails between those long cul-de-sacs to help with pedestrian access and circulation. With this plat, they've asked that it be considered before the City Council for preliminary plat approval.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak for a couple minutes before we have the public comment period?
Actually, sure, would be happy to. Thank you. And thanks for your service. I guess on a night like tonight, I'm more appreciative of the City Council after I've seen what you've been dealing with for the last day and respect really what you do. It's almost amazing the amount of input you can get over even an issue like this. Let me just follow that up with a very public apology. I think we owe it to you and to the people here. We circulated a flyer two nights ago that made a statement that said, that I think inaccurately represented that there was a city-proposed plan. And we accept responsibility for that. That was an inaccurate characterization of what we've experienced with the city. We do believe it accurately reflects what a number of city officials suggested that we do with the project. And, but we apologize because I think in our brochure, we should have clarified that better. And I think to the extent that that has caused you to have to respond to things and clarify, we profoundly apologize and are sorry for that and want the public to know that we were not clear about that, and that is our error, and we ask for your forgiveness. And we're sorry about that.
Can you restate your, state your name?
Bruce Robinson.
Thank you.
That said, though, I think, just, I think we're going to talk about a lot of things tonight, and you'll hear a lot of comments. Really, from what we distill from the emails, there are some concerns about pragmatic things, about access, construction, traffic, that will be discussed. And I'll let Russell from our company address those when it's his time. But I do think what's at stake for us, and we've had discussions with the city, is the vision of the project. And I think therein lies the concern, and I'm grateful for the flag and for a process that lets us in a public setting discuss our vision, what we think would be the best vision for it. And we also understand there may be other viewpoints, and hopefully, whatever vision comes out, that there's a good solution. Our main goal is, at the end of the day, to, you need to know, our main intent is to provide the city with what we think is the best long-term project. We may disagree about that, but don't, please don't question our motives. We really believe that what we presented represents what we think would be the best project for the city. We understand there may be some different views about that. And with that said, I think the one thing the flyer, the one thing we hope to capture in that flyer was something that doesn't often get talked about in a public setting. So often, we put up a map like that on a project. And we tend to see that map two-dimensionally. We see flat lines, and we see squares or rectangles or pie-shaped things for lots. And we tend to vote and make decisions off that. What we see when we present that is we see a streetscape. We see the houses that will be built on it. We see the ratio of small homes versus large homes, two-stories versus ramblers, whether these homes have to have a front-load garage, or whether they're wide enough to accommodate a carport. And when we look at that, our vision is to try to leave, we hope, the city something that we feel is compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods, and something that you're proud of, that we're proud of, and that doesn't do anything to affect the surrounding neighborhoods in terms of their values, or something that aesthetically is different than what's already built. And this is the main principle why we, why we support this vision and this plat. And we hope that there'll be some vigorous discussion about that tonight. We're open to that. That's part of the public process. We get it. And we hope that through this, that somehow there'll be something that comes out of it that will allow us to move forward and somehow work within the context, hopefully, of what the city wants as well, to make a beautiful project there. But the main point I'm trying to make is, what we decide on paper ends up having to get built. And those buildings are what's visual. The lots aren't visual, it's the buildings. And the way the lots get put together, the way the project gets configured, has a lot to do with the aesthetics of the project that are left for the city for decades to come. I don't want to take more of your time, but thank you, and again, our apologies.
Thank you. All right. We're now going to open our public comment period. First, we'll have Greg Brown, followed by Neil Van Lewen, and then Jason Knighton to begin. So Greg.
Good evening. I'm Greg Brown. I'm a resident of the Mountain Vista subdivision, which is adjacent to the proposed plan here. I did speak at the Planning Commission, and I think some of you got that in the notes. There was some concern from some of my neighbors that some, you know, it was a summation of my talking points. So I would like to have the notes clarified. As it was stated, we can go back to the video if necessary. But I was speaking as a concerned homeowner, and while I, yes, am on the HOA board, I was very clear to state that I'm not speaking on behalf of the board or the neighborhood. So I wanted to clarify that for all who are here tonight, and I appreciate it. As for the rest of it, I do stand behind what was written as a summation of that, which is that many in my neighborhood that I have spoken with, not the whole neighborhood, many, are in favor of this, and we feel that Symphony created a very compatible plan. However, we are concerned that we are not able to have access to this subdivision from Angel Street until the subdivision is almost fully developed. As explained that night, this would be done in potentially three phases. And phase, the last phase would be the one closest to Angel Street. And so our concern is that from an access-public safety standpoint, and construction and everything else that goes on, it would be better to have that road built upon beginning the project, not at the very end. There is concern that if the phases aren't fully completed, then maybe the road would never be built. Hence, then everything would flow back in through the two roads into our neighborhood, thus creating further safety issues and, you know, lack of access to the neighborhood there. So I just wanted to make those clarifying comments and let you know that I do agree that this is a great proposal from my personal perspective, because we could do far worse with what could come in. But at the same time, that I would hope that the City Council could be able to enforce or require that we have proper public access for all of the reasons I've listed before. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Brown, thank you. You did great. I want to emphasize, when I say three minutes, it is three minutes, so you did well. Thank you. All right. So Mr. Van Lewen, please.
Hi. I just speak on behalf of myself and not anyone else, but I live on Mountain Vista's road. And I too appreciate what Symphony Homes is doing here. I don't know about the particulars, but I think the overall view of the community is good, and I do think that it fits well with how our community will look. The concern I have is about traffic, and that is a separate concern. And I understand that. That's a separate concern. And Mountain Vista's road is used as a cut-through. I am the citizen that started the police process to investigate the traffic on the road. And until there's more access to Second North, I think it will continue to be a problem. But I don't think that this new neighborhood will be the problem. It will increase traffic. It will. But the only way to decrease the traffic is have more increased access to Second North, and that won't happen until other properties are developed. But as far as the Symphony Homes go, I think that, I think it's a good proposal.
Thank you. Also, excellent job on the time. Mr. Knighton, followed by Mr. Harwood, and then Mark Monson.
Hello. My name's Jason Knighton. I live right next to the proposed development at the end of Mountain Vista's road. So because of that, being right next door, I do have very, you know, personal interest in this. When I built my home, I bought my lot in 2004. I'm just under an acre, and I actually wanted to split my lot into two lots and approached the city about it at that time, and I was quickly denied based on the fact that I would be under the 20,000-square-foot lot minimum that was in place. So I went ahead, built my home on that lot. And so it's important to me that we see a nice development go in here, just to support what I've done and what's been done in the surrounding neighborhood. That said, I feel like this is a great plan. I think the cul-de-sacs are going to add to the community. I think they've done a nice job with it, and this is something that I would like to see move forward because it will support what I've got. I know, completely selfish on my part, but, and the other thing is, I'd like to just speak to the points that Planning Commission made as far as their concerns. I know one of their concerns was water pressure. I feel like really, this is not a concern because it is something that is just engineered into the project. I happen to be a master plumber, and when you have a dead end that's long, you just increase the line size and/or loop the line. So I feel like that is not a valid concern. Also, snowplows. I have an employee that now, is now running North Salt Lake City's Public Works Department, and I spoke with him about the snowplow situation. He told me that circles are not so much the concern, that the concern is snow piling up in front of mailboxes, and that's the complaint that is posed to them. My understanding, I could be wrong, but my understanding is that this development would have a central mailbox location, so this, there would not be private mailboxes in front of each home. So I feel like that's not a valid concern. The other concern, I think, was just the flow of people and traffic. And I feel that these are the type of developments that people want to live in. It offers them privacy. If someone wants to visit someone in another cul-de-sac, they will. Also, the fact that they have proposed the pool area, public area, that will bring community together more so than cutting out the cul-de-sacs and Symphony having to do away with the pool area. So I am in support.
All right. Mr. Harwood, followed by Mark Monson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Scott Harwood, and I also live in the Mountain Vista subdivision. I sent an email today. First of all, thank you for those that responded so quickly. That was very helpful to kind of have some background there. But the couple of things I've thought about as I look at this is just the phasing component from east to west concerns me, rather than starting on the west side and working east. I know there's a lot of variables as to land acquisition, and maybe that's not possible. But at the worst, I would think that construction traffic coming off Angel Street through even an access road or a gravel road that goes up to the west side, rather than having that construction traffic come through Mountain Vista's and through our entrance would be warranted to look at. So that was the first thing. And then I don't know on the rezone on this property when the timing was. To be honest, this just came on my radar yesterday. So the rezone question I have was notice sent out to the property owners in the certain circumference that's required. I don't remember seeing anything. So that was one question I had, was when that happened? Was notice given on the rezone? And was it given to our neighborhood? And then secondly, typically, I do commercial development, so I don't know residential well, but we always have to have a traffic study when we come in on a project master plan and a development that shows, you know, all kinds of things from A to Z on traffic components and impact to a certain area. I don't know if that's required here on a residential. I don't know what's required by ordinance, but I would certainly think that seeing a traffic study and knowing the impact that this development would have on our local streets, we're talking small neighborhood streets through our development that get used a lot of time as kind of shortcuts and seems to be a highway through our neighborhoods. But that's one concern also that I had. Supportive of what's shown, I mean, I think it's a great plan. I would like to see more open space. I don't know what the open space requirement is in the ordinance. I haven't looked at that real closely, but it seems light compared to the neighborhood next to us, which is Mountain Vista's, where that's a real key component to our neighborhood, and it's aesthetically pleasing. It just adds a theme and an element that this seems to have, just a lot of lots crammed in, a real close property area with not a lot of open space, other than that pool and clubhouse component. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mark Monson, followed by John McLeary.
Hi, you guys. I've emailed and exchanged. Appreciate the emails that you've sent back. Glad to be here for three minutes to have my say. Symphony Homes did a great job in our neighborhood, and I think all of us that live there love it. And this looks like a great neighborhood, and I like this layout. My wife would love the cul-de-sacs, and it looks awesome. The kids can play without all the through streets. That's great. The problem I have is how this, you know, I don't know all these empty houses, the faces on those people, but they're not going to want to drive through our neighborhood either. So how did this flag lot get zoned to be a flag lot? Because it doesn't have an external access, and I don't understand how that happened. We didn't get notice, except maybe there was a little sign forked in the little park strip, but I don't remember seeing anything. Because I would, there's no, I mean, this just doesn't make sense how this got zoned that way. Nothing against Symphony. It's just, we're adding 1,000 cars a day to drive through our neighborhood. They don't want that, and we don't want that. And we love those people, and we love Symphony, but it has nothing to do with that. It's just, it's poorly planned, and I don't see how we can subdivide a flag lot for 80 lots. And so I'm upset with that, and I wish there was an alternative. I don't know that there is an alternative at this point since the zoning's already happened, but I'm extremely displeased that this was zoned that way. The internal zoning, I'm fine with. I just don't want all those traffic. And if I lived in this beautiful neighborhood, I wouldn't want to drive through somebody's front yard every day.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. McLeary.
My name's John McLeary, Jr., and first, I've emailed a lot of you guys, or I've emailed all of you guys, and I appreciate those who've taken the time to correspond back with me multiple times. It shows a lot of respect and admiration for what you guys do, and I feel like you've heard my concerns. I live in a Symphony home. I love my home. I love my neighborhood. What I'm mainly concerned about is, and this has been going on for several years, is Mountain Vista Road, the road that goes off Second North down to Angel Street, is overused by the community. There's nothing we can do. Well, there's some things that we can do as an HOA, but you see people driving 40, 50 miles an hour through that neighborhood all the time. And if you look at the road, the road isn't wide enough to handle the traffic that there is right now. Most times, there's one to two cars on either side of that road in front of houses, and as you drive down, you actually have to stop and wait for another car to come your way, pull over to the side, and let them pass before you can go. I imagine where you guys live, that's not a concern. But on that road, it is a major concern, and if you're going to be throwing 350, 400 cars more down that road on a daily basis, in and out, huge concerns. Mailboxes have been taken out constantly by drivers because it's a blind corners, and if you're putting construction zones, I mean, construction vehicles back and forth through there, it's going to aggravate it. And I'm not even worried about the aggravation per se and the dirt per se, but I'm more worried about the safety. That is where this comes in, and I think when you guys take your oath as City Councilman, it's to do no harm, similar to medical, to do no harm. And there's alternatives to this. There's alternatives to build this from west to east. That is not Kaysville City's concern, nor Mountain Vista's concern, that the landowner currently wants Bruce to build from east to west. That's Bruce's and Symphony's concern, to work out an arrangement. And he's talked to people in our neighborhood and says that he's willing to investigate it. Willing to investigate it is a political word, has no action to it. And I asked Bruce, make that an action point. Build a gravel road to keep all your construction vehicles going from west to east and build it out. That way, to at least eliminate big construction vehicles going back and forth on a very tiny road that would help reduce safety concerns, dirt and mess, and just overall aesthetics, as well as, I want to know, because several people in our neighborhood wanted me to bring this up to the council, has there been a road study, a vehicle impact study, whatever you want to call it? Because when they've brought that up, nobody is clear on if that has happened. And before this process is approved by the council, I think we as citizens of Kaysville deserve a right to know if that has been done, and if so, what is the conclusions of that. So I got five more seconds. I appreciate your time, and I say, and I want to say, thank you so much.
Good job.
Good job.
You can end that way.
Amen. All right.
We'll allow it.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll now close the public hearing. And now we will go to questions from council members. So, Councilmember Page.
Yeah. This is for Andy. Just to follow up on some of the questions that has been asked tonight. When we talk about road studies, is that part of the process that the city goes through?
Traffic study is not required for residential development under our ordinance currently.
Okay. Let me ask you another question, and I'll, to be honest with you, this is a concern I have as well. But the question I have is, when we talk about access to this subdivision, and I know a lot of the people here are concerned about bringing all the construction traffic through an existing neighborhood, when is that addressed by the city typically?
Well, there's two points. You look at the overall access to the completed project at this stage with the preliminary plat. You look at the specific impact of traffic and construction with the final plat approval of each phase as it is presented before you.
Okay. So that would be the appropriate time for the council to actually talk about those issues?
Yes. If you're satisfied that the access, based on the overall plan, is, you know, 10 years from now, that's satisfactory. The individual impact of each phase needs to be reviewed when that phase is submitted for final approval.
Okay. And then we have, I have just one more question. When we talk about this dead-end road, you know, that it'll be a future road when the other land will be developed, when will that be discussed? The same thing at the final plat?
Yes. That's a standard.
How we handle that for?
Standard ordinance, and they'll have to meet that with the final plat.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Just a follow-up question on that. So when you're saying, you know, we'll review it with each individual plat, we review it as it's phased in, which, right now, tell me, we're looking at the full plat altogether. So what is, from your staff perspective, what are you looking for from council? Is this on just the specific phase or the entire plat as a whole?
Item on the agenda tonight is preliminary plat approval, which includes everything you see on this map.
Councilmember Adams.
With regards to some of the physical concerns, I guess, as far as dead end or long dead-end cul-de-sacs, long water mains that run, you know, great lengths to a dead end or whatever, 500, 600 feet, traffic piling up, which most of this traffic will be temporary, although I empathize with that. In your professional opinion, would you say that it would be better for us to make an ordinance restricting these kind of things throughout the entire city before we arbitrarily take those actions against one?
Yes. If this is something you don't want to see, we should strengthen the ordinance.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garn.
So I have a question, and I don't want to have this be a leading question, like I'm moving in this direction, but it might be a question for Mr. Scott or Mr. Mills with regard to the zone that we've already approved. In our rules, I believe, not ordinance, but in our rules, within one council meeting after, if a person who voted in the majority wishes to bring up a motion to reverse a motion, then we could do that. I think there's been more than one council meeting, and this is the next council meeting that we've addressed this issue. So just the opinion there, which would be, you know, would we be within our rules? That's my first question. Then I have a follow-up question. If we were to, if, for example, I were to submit a motion to reconsider the previous zone.
I don't know if Nick has anything to add to this, but...
but I think our rules of procedure state that if you don't make the motion in that meeting or the next meeting, you would no longer be able to revisit that. I believe there's also, in state code, a certain number of days that you can, even a council member or a member of the public can petition to change something. And that may have lapsed as well. I think it was 30 days.
That's correct. And so that time has lapsed as well.
So yeah, so I think even if our rules of procedure allowed you to bring that up again, I think that that state code would prohibit it.
Thank you. And then I may have a couple of questions for the developer. Would that be appropriate?
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Russell Wilson.
First of all, I appreciate the conversation that I had today that in looking at this, it doesn't look like anything's changed. And we'd had meetings before expressing certain concerns that the city had. But it's true that I guess some of the water pressure concerns, that there would actually be additional, I believe sewer or drainage capacity that would be a part of these walkway structures that have been added. Is that correct?
So I, one of the concerns that came up at the planning commission meeting was water pressure. It was stated that it would be a water pressure issue for these long dead-end streets. And I wanted to understand that myself, so I arranged a meeting with the Public Works Director and asked him about that. And he said, you know, it's actually not a water pressure issue. The issue for him is stagnation and bacteria issues for water at a long dead end. And so this is a slightly revised design. We've added pedestrian trail connections between three of the cul-de-sacs. And one of our ideas with that is to loop the water lines underneath or on the side of these pedestrian trails, to loop the water to get rid of that stagnation problem. The Public Works Director felt like that was something that would work. We talked about easements. I suggested a 10-foot easement. And he proposed maybe something greater, 12 to 15 feet. I said we're willing to look at that and consider that as well, if it fixes that issue.
Thank you. And you've addressed, you've addressed some of the concerns that, and I appreciate you doing that, that I had expressed in the meeting that we had. One thing too, that it's evident that from all the dozens of emails that I've received in the last few days, that people think very highly of Symphony Homes and the quality of subdivision that you put in. And they actually, many people like this particular plan with the cul-de-sacs and can see the value of that. There is the concern, however, with the access point. And I just wanted to ask, because I maybe haven't heard it from an official source, is it true that the first phase would be on the east and that there would be no access to Angel, for example, and that the construction traffic would have to go on this narrow windy road, Mountain Vista?
Yeah. As part of the preliminary plat application that we submitted, we proposed a three-phased development. And the first phase being on the east side of the subdivision, inclusive of 25 lots. And the sole access for those 25 lots would be, I believe it's called Morning Mist Lane.
Yeah, Morning Mist, yeah.
Morning Mist. The next phase, phase number two, would also be a total of 25 lots, which would make the second connection to the other street in Mountain Vista. And then the third phase would make the final connection to Angel Street. We understand the concerns with construction traffic. We've met with the property owner. We're not purchasing the property all at once. We're purchasing it in phases. We've met with the property owner. And we would be able to, on the second phase, we can look at making the two connections, one to Mountain Vista, one to Angel Street, to complete the connection at that point. As far as the first phase goes, we would still be looking at that main connection. It all has to do with farming and ranching of the property. That's the current use. That's why we are, usually we do start at the bottom. We are starting at the top. The Webster family is maintaining a farming and ranching operation there with cattle and alfalfa and just the way that they're set up, the way that their irrigation works, and the way that everything's laid out. It would be a pretty good, pretty big impact to build a, you know, build a temporary road or gravel road entrance all the way up to the first phase.
Another question, so I believe the zone before, the rezone to R1 LD was R120. And if I remember correctly, that would have meant 72 housing units as opposed to 82? Is that right? Or am I?
I'm not sure, to be honest. The reason why we went with the LD zone, we like it because it's still the two units per acre, but we have flexibility in lot sizes. Not all the lots have to be a half acre. We have some flexibility with shapes. And that allows us to accommodate different floor plans, different widths, different features in architecture.
Okay. And so if it were still, I don't want to make this hypothetical question, if, for example, we don't approve the plat and would like to work with you to look at something a little different to address these concerns, and that involved maybe having the traffic flow where midway point or some different configuration, so there was some connection that would shorten the length of the cul-de-sacs a little bit, that would, there's, is it true to say there's two things you could do in that scenario? One would be to?
Order, order, are we getting into discussion format?
I'm asking a question. So is it true that if you did that, you could either reduce the size of the lots and maybe still get your two units per acre, because that's a constraint? Or you could simply reduce the number of housing units?
I'm going to defer to Bruce Robinson. He's better equipped to answer those.
Yeah, you ask a really good question. And I don't, I don't know in this setting if I can really give you a, it's more than a two-minute response. But whenever you introduce, so think of the, you see the plat up there. When you introduce another road, I guess horizontally on this through the project, that roadway, if you think about it, takes up about 60 feet. Isn't that about the width of the public?
55.
5, yeah. And so what happens is somewhere you got to pick up that 55 feet. And it comes out of lots. Then your question is, we'll just lose lots? And that, we've done that in the past. You know, we're not the first, we're one of the few developers taking lots out of our projects to make them bigger. But the problem with that is land's not cheap right now. And it would be difficult from a pro forma point of view to make that work. If we had to, we would do it, but it would be difficult. Just the way it is. And so what, and the other thing that happens is the cost to the pro forma when you do that too, you want to get into this, that the expense of the road and what happens with the lots and how they're compromised ends up forcing us to have to give something up to make it work. And what we have to give up is the pool in the park, which is something we think is really important to the community. That pool in the park costs us about $500,000 to $600,000 to put in. And if we lose revenue and then we have additional cost of roads and some of those metrics, it makes it financially unviable to do that. So there's a short answer.
Thank you. I think that's a great answer. And I do have one other, this is my last question. So the last question is with regard to, I think, remaining concern, and that would be snow plowing. How do you see that? Is there a way to mitigate that in this current plan where you could mitigate? I understand that snow plows can do anything, but isn't it true that it would take more time? And maybe this question for Andy too. It takes more time to snow plow a cul-de-sac, which is a cost that gets passed on to, you know, we're talking road fee earlier, that doesn't that cost get passed on when it takes more time and it's more difficult to?
I don't know how you answer that. I think the primary concern, we've heard about snow plows' access to mailboxes, but because this community will have a central postal unit, the post office won't let us put up, would prefer to put up individual mailboxes, but they won't let us. So the issue in terms of getting your mail is gone. It does take a little longer to snow plow a cul-de-sac. And something you could look at in the city is tax cul-de-sac lots at $10 or $25 a year more than other residents. I don't know. My guess is people would still buy them because they love them that much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My last question.
Do we have any more questions for the developer?
I have one.
Michelle.
And this can be for Bruce or Russ, whoever. And Russ, I apologize. This is probably a repeat of my many, many questions I've sent your way. But just a clarification, obviously there's turnarounds for all three, or all four of the cul-de-sacs here. And then there's this road that ends that's stubbed out there. And we've had a lot of questions. You'll remember, this was my very first one, is about access and safety on there. Can you just restate your plans for the end of that road?
Sure, yeah. So you're, I'll try to point to it if this works. Your question is about these?
Correct, yeah.
Lots, correct? So Andy will have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in the ordinance, it says that if we're from an intersection, if we're more than one lot deep, we're required to put in a temporary turnaround or some sort of turnaround. In this case, speaking with Andy, and we've done this in other subdivisions here in Kaysville, we've been allowed to put in a hammerhead turnaround area. And it is an easement that would fall within the driveway area of these two lots to be built. So that is the plan with those two lots.
Thank you. And then another separate question. So in this first phase, I know it's in the packet or somewhere that says how many lots are planned for this first phase. It just has the one access point off of this Morning Mist Lane. And maybe Andy can answer as well. But what's our ordinance for having access to developments, having more than one access point?
Our ordinance only addresses permanent situations. So a temporary or phasing line, there is no strict requirement.
So in this case, because it's temporary, meaning that they'll be continuing?
That there's stub outs where the road can be extended and a second access can be provided at some point.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What's your agreement? So you only own phase one, correct?
We will own phase one, yeah. We don't own it currently.
Okay, these are just, you don't own any of the three, okay.
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question for Andy?
Yes, of course.
Andy, and as we're approving this plat and making this decision, it's approving the order they wanted in, correct?
We're not approving any phasing plan at this point.
Just the layout.
We're approving this layout of this project, yes.
Thank you.
And Andy, I do have a question. It was mentioned a couple different times by those who were in the public comment period. The traffic study, although it's not required, was one done?
Say the question again.
Although it was not required for residential, was a traffic study of any kind done?
No formal traffic study has been done for this property in particular. I've looked at the traffic impact quickly. I've reviewed several traffic studies and understand how they're performed. Also, over the years, as we've done capital facility plans and other planning efforts, this has always been planned at two units per acre residential development with the road pattern being shown as capable of handling the traffic.
And so when you're talking, what is, what are our roads capable of handling? And what is your estimate?
Just generically, a neighborhood street, which these all are, 55-foot right-of-way, you look at the actual capacity, it's well over 10,000 cars a day. Now, the traffic people will tell you that the livable amount of volume on a road is far less than that, somewhere around 2,000 cars a day. So I look at the traffic at the very outlet of Mountain Vista's and 200 North, which is where, because you'd have all the roads accumulated by then, you'd be approaching 1,500 to 1,600 cars a day, just on a rough estimate.
And so as this is phased, so that will increase during the construction phase, obviously, and then until that access point out onto Angel Street is completed, it will increase that. Do we have an estimate as to how many? Does it matter? I think it matters to the residents, what to expect. Even if it is not what they want to hear, I'm sure our residents would love to know.
I don't think even during the construction, prior to the connection to Angel Street, that it would exceed that amount.
Okay. All right. Okay.
There was a concern about, somebody mentioned that they weren't noticed about this. Did we send the mailers out to the 500-foot radius?
Yes, we did. I've got the list of mailers in the file.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Any further questions? Actually, I do have a question. I think I want to ask Nick this question. Give us some, I spoke to you earlier today about possible motions for this. Can you give us your feedback on this?
Are you speaking about my opinion on whether we should approve it, table it, or deny it?
Yes, please.
So I've looked at it, and I've spoken to Andy about this briefly. And at preliminary plat, there, this is somewhat of an administrative decision. This is almost as administrative a decision as you can get. And there are two sections of the code that I think apply, state code that apply. One is 109A509, which says basically that if somebody applies for a plat and their application meets the ordinance, they're entitled to an approval. There's a second section, 109A306, that says that unless the city strictly requires or strictly forbids something, that the ordinance, the city's ordinance should be construed in favor of the applicant. And based on those two sections of the state code, I think that the city should approve the plat, the preliminary plat this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right. Councilmember Hanson first.
Just with that as a question, in our code, you know, the traffic pattern, I guess approved, I don't like it, the ordering. You know, again, and we're not doing that today, the phases, but I don't even know if I'm putting this in a question. But right now, if I approve this and later on, I'm just going to deny the phases in that order, is that really the appropriate place to do it? Because I'm worried about the traffic flow? Because I think that fits within our city, you know, it's very loosely written as we looked about the traffic pattern. But just not having access from Angel and only going through the neighborhood makes me worry. Is that the appropriate place to?
I believe that the appropriate place is with the final plat. I think it's very appropriate to raise that concern, make sure the developer's aware of it. But at this point, that's not valid.
At this point, we're just going up the design right here. But, okay.
I will say though, that when final plat comes around, if they phase it in three final plats and the plats meet the ordinance, then the same thing would be true. This council, any council in the state should vote to approve those as long as final plat meets the ordinance. So for what that's worth.
Thank you. Councilmember Garn.
That was going to be my next question, which you answered. So essentially, these are rubber stamps. And I might also say that before the zone, the developer, once they owned this property or asked the question to confirm this, but they would have been able to, as long as they meet the ordinance of the city, would have been able to, on R120, do a development. And there really isn't much for the city to do in that regard.
Yeah, I don't know that I love the term rubber stamp. I think that the council at this point stands in the position to ensure that the ordinance is met. But once the ordinance is met, this is a very highly administrative decision. And so administrative decisions, as opposed to legislative decisions, the council, whoever the land use authority in this case... in this case you, the city council, don't have very much discretion.
Right. Largely, when you say administrative, that means professional staff is making an assessment whether the development plan and every, and then inspections later, meets the code.
Exactly right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions at this point? All right, I'm going to need a motion.
I've got another question, then.
Go ahead.
Mr. Thompson, have we ever required before a temporary construction access? He's going through twenty-eight years of files. Give him a minute.
It seems like we have a couple of occasions where the development strung itself out over a long range with only one access point.
Where it worked out?
Did it work out?
Let me rephrase. So, it was, it was, it was an amicable deal to both parties. So it, you know, if...
At that point, it was, yes.
If it came through, okay, if it came through private property or something of that nature, both parties agreed, yeah, we'll let this gravel road come through.
That's correct, yes.
I would just like to make sure that we reserve time to discuss the actual layout. I guess we do that in the comments section after the...
Okay.
I do have one more question.
Yes, Councilmember Barber.
So if we did have a requirement, suggestion, whatever it is, for this temporary access or construction access, would now be the appropriate time to make that as a recommendation from this body? So that's a question for Nick?
Yeah, you can always make the recommendation.
It would just be a recommendation at this point, though?
Yeah.
Okay. Good to know.
Well, I would make a motion to table this item with just a brief explanation. I, I don't want to vote no at this point, but I would like to see, a lot of, especially the traffic flow concerns have come up just recently, and so I would like to explore that a little bit more to see if there might be something that could be worked out with the developer to address some of those concerns. So, it's a explanation.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay. A motion to table by Councilmember Garn, seconded by Councilmember Hanson. All right, we will, any discussion on that?
As far as this property goes, I wasn't part of the initial zoning, it was prior to this term, my term on city council, but as far as this preliminary plat, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of great interaction. One of the key points that I thought was impressive to me was when, as I met and discussed with residents, that Symphony had already had communication with neighboring residents, they'd held an open house, I believe, discussed with a lot. For me personally, that, that goes a long way. That, that shows that they're doing a lot of the things that we advocate for. So a lot of these issues are brought up before they come before the city. And I advocated more with that with Symphony Homes, and they've been really great in communication. I'm impressed to see so many people here representing. I'm also really appreciative of the apology that we have received. I know that I have spent a considerable amount of time responding to emails. If there's anyone here I didn't get back to yet, I apologize, I'll get there. Mostly stating the city's position, and I guess in this case, I'll just say my own position, of the city has no plan. There's no plan from the city other than to uphold our ordinances and codes as they, as they stand. That's our plan, that's our job as representatives. So I feel like we're getting to a much better point. I wish that had been communicated better, and I hope that we're resolving some of those questions that come. My second is maybe a question for the developer, if we can do that at this time, to have them respond?
Sure.
Theoretically or personally?
I would personally want to.
Okay. But my question would just be, hearing these concerns specifically about access and traffic that have been voiced pretty, pretty thoroughly through all of the emails, many that you've probably seen, as well as the discussion here tonight, do you have a recommendation or, or a proposal for how to address those, seeing how well you've worked with residents and want to make this as comfortable as possible?
I don't know if we have an answer for you right this minute. It will take some more meetings and some thought to see if we can figure out a way to make construction impacts on the existing residents as minimal as possible. We are facing some constraints, and we, we get, we get the reason people ask for this. Every community we build has construction impact, and it's inconvenient to be around it. And we acknowledge that, and we'd like to, to make that as, as work as well as possible. May I ask a question?
Yeah, yes.
In an effort not to keep coming back and back. We can address that question, but are there other reasons that we'll just come back next time and get tabled again, and tabled again, and tabled again, because fundamentally you don't like this configuration? Because if you don't, we would like to get an airing of that, so we, we know what we're dealing with. Is that the only issue, or are there other issues?
Can I, can I help in? We have a lot of wants. You go ahead first.
Okay. Yes, let's go with Councilmember Garn, Councilmember Barber, and then Councilmember Hanson.
I was just going to say, speaking for myself as the motion maker, I actually hate tabling. I love to move business. But to answer your question, I'm trying to divide between just my personal preference and accepting as valid what you say, that people like cul-de-sac lots, and I can certainly understand why. And I'm not opposed to cul-de-sacs, but these are so long, I mean, you've got three that, that are right at the maximum. So it's going as far as you can go and still be within code. That concerns me a little bit, and I do still think there's, there are some issues there, where this year we've had, you know, as far as in town, we might worry about water, but we've had a great snow year, you know, it hasn't been a problem. But you get a real, not any snow. But in the future, we have a big snow year, and you're pushing all that snow, most of it goes to the side, of course, but then when you get to the end, there's a problem with where you put all that snow. That, that takes a little time, it could also affect emergency services and other things. So I do have concerns. I don't think this design is optimal, but I wouldn't pretend to, to re, you know, I wouldn't pretend to try to design it myself, and I think that's why I took a little bit of offense to the flyer that went around, is that the city's actually developing a plan, or that we want smaller homes, or that we want... I'm, I'm certain that, you know, this is going to be a beautiful development, but we did have some concerns, and we hope that there was a way that we could work with you to address all those concerns. You've addressed some of them, and, and I think that's wonderful, but I wish we could address all of them. But I'm not sure if that's, you know, realistic. I mean, really, from an ordinance standpoint, it's the nineteen-point-five, nineteen-point-one-point-five that addresses the sort of circulation of traffic. And I think you could make a case, not just the cul-de-sacs themselves, but sort of the access points, that maybe the circulation isn't optimal. And, and we broadly interpret the statute to favor the, the landowner to be able to, you know, develop their property, and I get that, but you could at least argue that there is some question that would give you pause on that ordinance, given, given the access and some of the other concerns. At the end of the day, though, no, I think we need to make a decision. I think, I think that would be really horrible policy to table something just to try and kill it, and, and frankly, I don't want you to go away, I just want to, you know, and I think you'd, you know, do a great job, I just would wish that all of the concerns could be addressed.
Right. And I understand that, I just want, I was hoping the tabling would be specific, because let's say we solved the construction access problem, but we came back with the same plat. What I'm hearing is, we still really don't like the plat, but it wasn't specifically stated in the tabling, so we might be right back, table it and go back and figure this out. So I'm trying to get the specific language of that, so we know when we come back, we can try to address all the issues, not one, just to be dealing with another one next time, so we can try to be efficient.
So the two remaining issues I have, and then I'll turn it back to the chair to, are, are just the length of the cul-de-sac, right at the max of code, the snowplowing concerns there, and the second would be the, the traffic access during construction.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Barber.
To answer your question, I think that's a very fair question. I think it's important that we're wise stewards of people's time and energy. I don't want to require you or any of these residents who are giving it our time to come back unduly, so I think it's a fair question. And I personally, I have my opinions about the layout and what I personally would like, but I'm trying to, I'm keeping those separate, because I'm basing our opinions on what the ordinance is state. And as long as we're within our code and it meets, I think we have, that's our very basis for tabling, our basis for approving or tabling.
Right. And so the, even though the cul-de-sacs are long, they technically meet the code, but I get your concern. But part of it, I think, comes back to this, this connectivity in the vicinity clause in your ordinance. And, and I get that, and there's different ways to interpret that, but I think that's what you're addressing.
Excellent. Thank you.
Then Councilmember Hanson.
I was just adding, for me personally, as I read through the emails today, I don't think the neighbors, you know, more support for this layout than anything. The bigger concern for me, I mean, the main concern is the access. So, the construction access, just making, because again, phased that way, it doesn't feel comfortable with construction access, I think, lessens the burden. And if you've driven down that, I don't know what the road is with the curve in it, that, it's scary.
Okay. All right. So, yes, Councilmember Adams.
In a, in a perfect world, this would work out great. We had the same scenario happen about eighteen months ago, and we encouraged both parties to try and get together with the private landowner, similar scenario, and create a gravel road, and everybody did the best they could. But at the end of the day, a landowner has a right to say no to, to that kind of an access, so those things are difficult to do. I, I don't see any lack of willingness on anybody's behalf here. As far as where that plan came about, I believe it was originated by a planning commissioner, Mr. Josh Sunloft. So I don't fault Symphony, I mean, he is an official member of a city body, so if anybody got angry at you guys for that, or, or if the residents are upset thinking, hey, that's city literature, well, I guess it's not official city literature, but it was drafted by a planning commission member. So, just so we know that. But it's not, it's not drafted by this body. If I may, I'd like to take a quick survey, if you guys don't mind. Would everybody who's in here for this purpose stand?
Right.
Okay, so everybody who disagrees, or everybody who's okay with this layout, would you please sit down?
I don't.
Symphony, don't turn around, that's not fair to them. All right, thank you. Thank you. So, it looks like the majority of it is obviously traffic flows. And, and, you know, so I don't think the layout's really the concern. The concern I have with the layout is, I think we're being too restrictive. I don't get the need for these trails, I don't get the need for water lines to be looped. I'm a former E-100 contractor, we've heard from a master plumber tonight, I install those for a living. There's no need for that. If, if we're going to do that, then I'm going to ask staff to go throughout the entire city and loop every dead-end piece of water line that we have. It's just, it's arbitrary, it's not, it's not, it's not practical. If they want to put the trails in for aesthetics to, to enhance their property and enhance the, the long-term use of it for the homeowners, great. But I disagree with the need for that. They meet the code, we, we would love to do everything we could for you guys to, to, you know, alleviate the traffic concerns. But from what I've been told, there's just no way to do that with the current owner of the property at this time. So I don't, I'm not sure how that really comes into play. I know for me, I re, I'm not going to name who it was, but I appreciate an email that I got, and the gentleman was opposed for both of the questions that I asked. And then when he realized, hey, this, this meets code, and he went and did some more homework, he came back and responded, you know what? King's X, I get it. I like the layout overall, and I'll just, you know, his sentiment to me was, he might be saying I'm misinterpreting him, but his sentiment to me was, you know, I'll, I'll put up with it, I get it. But the sentiment I add to that is, years ago, I had a gentleman come up to me in, in process of developing a project, and he was upset about, about transient dust in the air. And I says, sir, whose, whose, whose air did you pollute when you built your home? Whose roads did you muddy up when you built your home? How did the construction vehicles get to your home when your home was built? And it changed his mind, it changed his attitude. And I'm not trying to change your minds, you guys, I'm not. I get your concerns, I do. I live on a busy road myself, so we just spend our time in the backyard. But this is, it's a temporarily construct, temporary construction thing, twenty-five lots at a time, I think it's livable. The last comment I'd like to add is when we were faced with this, that I referenced earlier on in my comments, that construction access did not work out. And we have, we have never received one complaint, ironically, it was Symphony Homes. We've never received one complaint afterwards from the folks who came, you know, just like you guys are tonight, and said, hey, my kid almost got hit, or, hey, it's congested, or these subcontractors are being belligerent. So I get it, it's a tough thing at this stage of the game, but I think it's, I think it's bearable and doable.
Thank you. Councilmember Page.
Well, just a quick, everybody got in?
Yeah.
First of all, you know, there is land rights, and, you know, it's to the best interest of everyone that we preserve them and make sure that, you know, an owner can develop their land how they want, if it meets the zoning. I can tell you, I'm a person that lives on a cul-de-sac, and I love living on a cul-de-sac. And is there problems with snow? There is problems with snow. But I, I would, and I'm the poor guy that has to move the snow because it's a private lane, but I would take that any day. It's, it's great to raise kids on those things, and, and I think that you have the advantage of, the way that they're addressed, they have bigger lots and bigger homes, that's just a good thing. But, you know, I understand as well that there's a, there's a huge concern that has to deal with when you have construction vehicles. I would, I would highly suggest that maybe, maybe that's a conversation with the owner that owns it now, and, and see if there's something that we can do to, to mitigate that. I think that that would be huge for the families. I, you know, I'm coming from a person that my younger sister, one of his kids, was almost killed by a, by a dump truck. And, and I just think that, that I, I admit to, and I know that I was part of that council when we talked about it, and over there by Philip Street, and I think I got to give credit to Symphony Homes to talk, and, you know, they talked to the contractors, and they dealt with them, and gave them suggestions on, on their speed and different things, and it made, it was very helpful. And I think that all in all, they did a pretty good job on making sure that they kept the speed down, and was concerned about those, what the people felt, and their concerns about safety. So, I don't know, that's just my suggestion. I, I think we do what we can do and, and move forward.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I think we're ready to vote on tabling this. All right. Councilmember Hanson, if you would start.
Aye. Oh, you're going this way?
Yeah.
Okay, aye. We usually go around this way.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Okay.
May I ask a clarifying question on that?
Yes.
Are you tabling this for a specific amount of time, or until a specific issue is resolved? So they know... Are we tabling it for two weeks? Are we tabling it until they address the access issue?
So, as motion maker, and then if anyone has any added comments, but I would, I was, when I made the motion, sorry, I didn't, wasn't more specific, I was thinking until the next council meeting.
So, March first.
But that's only half of his question.
What's the other?
With the, what direction do they need to address?
Okay, so, that I thought we did address, but incorporate, I, I think it's primarily the, and I don't want to speak for the entire council, but it's primarily those two things that, one was the access points, traffic for construction vehicles, if anything can be done to alleviate that concern. And the second thing would be to maybe, maybe I don't represent everybody on this, but I'm still concerned about the length of the cul-de-sacs and the snowplowing concerns there.
Can we redo the motion with that, with direction?
I, you know, can I just express my opinion on that?
Okay.
Well, I don't know basically how we do that.
This is unusual, let me, let me wait.
I think, I think he needs to know what we're looking for.
Yes, this is true.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Yes, let's... Yes, let's, let's do it. Sorry, this is messy. Go ahead.
You know, I, my personal opinion, you know, I'm okay with the layout, I just want to see if, if there's a meeting of the minds that we can come up with a way of mitigating or figuring it out, you know, what we can do with the access. I mean, that's the number one issue to me.
Okay. And Councilmember Adams, go ahead.
I'd like to just comment to that, so that the people know that Symphony has tried, the Webster's have tried, everybody's worked on it, we've worked on it, we've dealt with this before when you guys weren't here. So, there's already been attempts to try and get this construction access. Two more weeks is a Band-Aid, it's, it's not going to heal your pain. So.
All right. Is, is that direction enough?
We, yeah, I think, and I, well, I guess our hope would be, we think, within a matter of a couple of days, we can come up with some alternatives, and hopefully we can get back on the agenda.
Absolutely. We will expect you on March first, all right?
We, we can't take more comments now, but, but absolutely.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll, we'll talk to you afterwards, that would be great, thank you. All right. So, there's action item four A. Next will be considera, consideration of a resolution authorizing the sale of a portion of the city's real property at approximately 400 East Oak Lane to F4 Holdings LLC. And Shane, let's, let's wait for just a moment, while.
Yeah, until they file out.
This resolution would ratify the sale of city property as discussed at 400 East Oak Lane, as discussed in the last council meeting during the closed session. We received direction to move forward with that sale, and staff recommends you adopt the resolution as presented, and Mr. Bruff is here, if you have any other additional questions from.
Thank you, all right. So that is the introduction. We do, now we will have a public hearing, and we would like to hear from David Saunders.
Hi, my name is Dave Saunders. When I saw this, I was a little bit surprised that the price of the parcel was going to be only $50,000. Everybody I talked to said, well, that seems really, really low for a piece of land. I did a quick search, there are five properties currently for sale in Caseville, the average price is 346,000 an acre. So if we're selling an acre for 50,000, we're running short almost 300,000 off of retail prices, and I would submit that could be used to go a long ways in building some roads.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we now close the public hearing, and now we will go to questions, but first, I do want to respond to the, the comment that was made, it's not a buildable, buildable lot, that's the difference. All right, okay, let's go with clarifying questions.
Sure.
Councilmember Adams.
I'll have more as we go. Mr. Thompson, is this lot absolutely unbuildable? You've, let me, let me be square, you've told me before that it is buildable, so I'm not trying to bait you.
Absolutely is a strong word. This lot would be very difficult to get it into a buildable condition. As it's proposed right now, the property would have no street access, it has floodplain in the bottom, it's got very steep slopes on it that would have to be dealt with.
How does it not have street access when it, when it's at the end of a road? There, there are other homes in, in the area that a road runs right into a driveway, how, how does it not have any frontage or street access?
Because the proposed property for sale would not abut the end of that road.
Can we throw that on the screen? Do you guys have a map prepared with you?
Yep, there's not one.
Well, I'm talking about that road right there, that it does abut.
But, yes.
Is it not about that?
We would not.
It does?
About that road with, with the.
That's what I thought.
What was that, Andy?
So it does abut a road?
We would not, this is a depiction of the proximate area, where we still own this, and the desired use of that is stormwater detention, we would need access to that, and we would preserve the access with ownership of the property.
So, to answer to this concern of a resident, an easement couldn't just be granted to get to the pond, and a driveway could still branch off to get to a home? According to, you know, let's, let's stick with codes and ordinances stuff, could that meet an ordinance?
The code does not provide for the end of a stub road as meeting a frontage requirement. So, at the very least, they would need to extend that road and construct a permanent cul-de-sac type facility on it.
Is our road right there currently in a, in a, in compliance with international fire code for turnarounds?
I believe there was a temporary turnaround there at one point, it's not entirely functional at this point, no.
Hmm. So, questions for this table over here. On your resolution, you've, you've mentioned the tax ID number of the property. The property, that tax ID number is about 3.56 acres. But then in the packet, you've mentioned that the parcel to be sold is just under an acre. And then in the real estate agency agreement with the Realtor, you've mentioned that it's two-thirds of an acre being sold. Can we clarify all this?
Yeah, it's two-thirds of an acre, there's no way to break off that parcel number from the rest of the parcel at this point, because it hasn't been plotted differently. So the entire parcel is three-point-whatever acres, like you said. We're only interested, we only listed selling that bottom two-thirds of an acre. And under the resolution, under point two, this is, the resolution only authorizes the sale of the property in compliance with what was listed.
So the listing photo shows a different photo, is there a reason? It actually is a smaller, that triangulated piece is not in the listing photo. Is there a reason why the, the land is, is bigger now in this photo?
No, the only thing I know is that we're going to sell .66 acres, so I think these are approximate photos, demonstrate the general area.
So with this being determined as surplus property, why didn't we then go down to the county and break that off and get its own tax ID number before we proposed to sell it? With its own legal description?
Because we didn't want to, we didn't want to spend money on something that we didn't want to do. One of our proposals from even last week was, sell it to one person, sell it to another, or don't sell it at all. So, we don't want to get some, spend a couple of thousand dollars on a survey if we're not going to sell it.
Okay, I'm glad you bring up those proposals, let's hear them. So what are the proposals?
I don't, I don't have the proposals with me, we presented those last meeting and, and received direction from the council to proceed with one of the proposals. So that's what the, the direction was, and that's what we would do, sell that to the, to the one proposal.
You don't know what the, what the.
I don't have all the data in front of me, no.
And, if I might, is it not true that some of the details that were discussed during our closed session, the, the bidders preferred not to have those made public, is that correct?
I don't know, the reason, if they, if they articulated that or not, the reason we talk about it in closed session is so that we, we don't, if, if we are going, if one of the options was to continue to list it, which was also something we talked about, we didn't want to disclose those amounts and have somebody just say, oh, I'm going to go raise it one dollar above the, the other person's price. So now that the direction was to go ahead and sell it to one person, it's less important that we don't disclose those, those, those amounts.
Okay, thank you.
One of them is already disclosed.
That's true.
So did the other ask you not to disclose his offer then? I'll honor that.
I, I don't want to presume, that's all.
Well, he's emailed about it all week to you, so it's on city, it's grammar requestable now.
I did not ask his permission, and I would not do that, so, thank you.
So the offer, 25,000 and 25,000, where is the quote-unquote donation going to go? Do we, go ahead.
I, I think the, the, what, one was, the first 25,000 was, was cash, and I assume that the second 25,000 was also cash, but, but was, they, the donation was asked to put it toward work in this area, or flood control, or whatever it is, so.
Have, have we ever done a tran, well, you're new here, Andy, have we ever done a transaction where half was donation and half was cash when we sold real property?
I believe we've taken donations as compensation in the past, yes.
For real property?
I think so, I can't guarantee that, but I believe that's the case.
So speaking of the donation, it will go to the immediate, it'll benefit this property then?
Well, we, we wouldn't use it on this property, no, we would use it in flood control prevention there above, on the property that we retain.
Okay. Is that a project that has been on the schedule to be done? Has that been slated to, is, is it, is on our radar as an issue?
I think there, there have been some tasks we've wanted to, to, to take care of there, but I don't think we've had any pending projects.
Maybe, excuse me for maybe asking the wrong, Andy, is that a project that you're aware, was there, has there been designs over the last couple of years, or has it been on the radar to go up and do work on that pond? Because 25,000 to dredge that pond out and rebuild, as I've read in emails, to rebuild the dam, will that, will 25,000 cover all that work?
Not necessarily, no. That is a project that has not been designed, it has been, as you said, on the radar, it's something that there's benefit to the city, we believe, from a storm drain perspective, but it has not been a scheduled project at this point yet.
Is there, has it been an emergency situation up there, is there flooding at risk?
It has not been an emergency situation.
So 25,000, in your opinion, would be a, will be a nice down payment, but it will not cover the project?
That's what my expectation would be, yes.
I'll rest for a minute.
All right. Any questions from council?
I have.
Councilmember Barber.
And this will relate to not being very familiar with this project prior to last council meeting, and, so I apologize for not asking it then, as I've thought more about it, I've had more questions come up. But, just for my benefit, can you go back in the history, what preempted this, listing this surplus for sale?
The adjacent property owner approached the city and said that we weren't doing a good job of maintaining this area, it's adjacent to, to his home in this case, and that he'd like to explain how he didn't believe that we needed this property. I think Andy evaluated that, I think he even approached the city before I even started, but, but I know that he did come again, and probably over a year, a little over a year ago. Mentioned that, that he would like to take this on, I think he submitted an amount of money at that time that we, to purchase it. We brought it to the council, the council was not, didn't feel like we should just give it to one person, I think there was a property owner across the way that also expressed interest. So at that time, we put it into an open process on our website, we did that for two or three months, after that, we brought it back, we only had, I think we had the two, the two proposals from the same two that, that ended up, that we discussed last time. At that time, there was concern that the property was buildable, so we, we said, well, maybe the best thing to do is, following your lead, is just to contract with a professional. And that's when we contacted Mr. Bruff and asked him to just list it, just like you would any property. I think he listed it for over 100,000, probably had a lot of calls, I think he had a lot of calls at first, until most people did their due diligence. And then, we did that for three months, and then had the same two offers, so we felt like that's probably all we were getting. As we mentioned last time, we're happy to keep listing it, if you want to keep listing it. We have no timetable on this, but we just feel like that's about where we're going to land.
And then, one follow-up question, how did the amount of the, I think it's the .66 acres, how did we determine that that was the amount that we were wanting to offload?
I think it was more or less just this drawing in a, in a GIS format, they can, you can draw that in a map, and it can tell you how big that is, so it's just an approximate, so.
There's been no survey done on that?
No, we have not surveyed it.
Is there, is there a reason that we're not listing the entire 3.56 acres?
We need, we bought this property for flood control, and we need the, the property that we're retaining.
Okay.
So we just don't need the property.
We just don't need that bottom part.
And that's why the city council took that step last year of declaring it surplus.
Thank you, that's helpful to me.
Councilmember Hanson.
Is there a restriction on the donation?
I, I think, I think it was, and maybe Mr. Bruff can step in and answer that question from exactly what was said. We, we were going to address that in the, in the agreement, so we would say what we could or couldn't do, but I think the donation was to, to use it in, for flood control mitigation on the property that we have there. I think that was the restriction.
Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay.
And that's listed in their offer, specifically just for this, just for this reason?
Okay.
Are there any encumbrances currently on the property?
Pardon me?
Are there any encumbrances currently on this property, on the city property?
There's no recorded easements that I'm aware of. That's what you mean, there are, there is flood zone boundary, there are facilities.
Is there anything that's been constructed on the property?
Part of the reason for the, maybe dispute over the size of the property for sale.
We don't need to try and, see, looking at the bayern in disbelief, we don't need to try and hide this, guys, is there any encumbrance or not on the property?
Can I just take?
There's a dam there, the original proposal was to acquire to the top of the dam, with the review of public works, we moved that line to the bottom of the dam. So when you talk about improvements, there is a dam there, it's been there for probably eighty years, there are pipe works associated with it.
Is that sport court that I can see in the trees, the blue sport court, is it on the city property? Let me be direct.
I believe it encroaches into the city property.
You believe it does?
If I could answer that question. You know, that property has been kind of a wilderness. I grew up just up the top of the hollow there, and there, I went around when we were talking about this and found some of the survey hubs, and there's at least three properties that have encroachments on the city property. I don't, I know that one of the families in the house there has no idea, had no idea when they bought the house, that there was encroachments onto the hollow property. I've always joked about it over the years, but anybody that lives next to a vacant, unoccupied property, every time they mow the lawn, they go a couple inches farther, and after ten years or so, you get a couple of feet. And I, I don't know what all the encroachments are, but, you know, the old Dick Bowman house goes four feet into this hollow property there of the cities, and it has sprinklers, and rocks gaping, and, and it's been there for years. And so there's, there are a lot of encroachments onto the city property around that thing. Hopefully, we can solve some of those.
Councilmember.
Is that what we're trying to do here, is solve this one then? You said hopefully we can solve some of the, are we, are we trying to solve this one?
I don't think that was the intent, I think Mr. Fisher just wanted some extra ground. And, and I think part of the reason that configuration changed a little bit, probably kind of, it was an outgrowth of, I think Mr. Fisher wanted a little bit more property, and when Andy and I talked about it, the intent was to push it to below the toe of the dam, so the city had control over, over that. And that's, that's why that picture is a little different than the one that was in the multiple listing.
If you don't mind, so when you received phone calls, I recall you got ten, fifteen calls, whatever, were they instructed that this is flat-out not buildable?
I don't think I ever said flat-out not buildable.
Okay, let's lighten it up, were they told it's unbuildable, it's not a building lot?
I told most of the people I didn't think it was feasible to build on it. If you look at the floodplain map, almost half of that property is in a floodplain. And the elevation slope there, I don't know anyway how you could build a road off of that stub road by the old Dick Bowman home down into the bottom, it's, it's way steep, I don't think it'd fit any ordinances. You might, if you put 100 feet of fill down in there, be able to build on top of it, but then you'd probably have to put a big pipe in the bottom and get permission to go through the floodplain. I, I think economically, it's feasible, is the truth.
I'd like to, if, if we may, lend credence, there is a gentleman here, if he's an expert sitting behind Andy, who said that the sport court is not on city property, I would, I would, if you would welcome him, I would welcome that, if he has expertise on it. If it's not, that's great.
Wait, okay, thank you. I think Councilmember Garn, you had a question?
Yeah, maybe this question is for Mr. Bruff. Sorry to make you get back up, maybe again. I just wanted to briefly address, and the mayor kind of answered this question, but just maybe to get a professional who sees market values of properties all the time. Why would the, so it's not a buildable lot, that's, we've already heard that, but what is, was there an appraisal done on the property at any point during the sale process?
I believe the city had someone else before we put it up for sale, give a valuation of it. I can't remember what that was. It's, it's an interesting piece, because if somebody bought it to like, turn it into a, let their kids go play there, they'd, I think they'd have to, the way the cities explained to me, they wanted to preserve the ability to go in and maintain the pond there. People would probably have to trespass to get onto this property. And so it, it becomes, you almost have to sell it to a neighbor for it to be usable, unless somebody just wanted to buy it and let it go wild. And I don't think that would behoove the city to have that happen.
That's what we did with it. Bought it and let it go wild for 10-plus years.
Councilmember Garn?
So the, sorry, the question I have is, the fact that, I mean, to the point, if we acknowledge that anything's buildable, if you engineer it and you spend enough money, when Andy said, you know, you could put pylons down to bedrock and build a platform home or whatever, but those, is it true that those kinds of costs, if the cost of actually building and making and building are multiple times more than an average house, that would tend to depress the value of the property itself? So not every lot is the average, depending on the buildable nature and how expensive it would be to build on a lot, that may impact the property, how much actually gets paid for, paid for it.
In a huge way, particularly with this piece.
Yeah, and last question. The ultimate determination of value is how much, not an appraisal, but how much someone's actually willing to pay.
Yeah. It's, yeah, I have people call me all the time, and they're neighbors, and one wants to buy the back end of the other one's lot, and how you determine a value. And I said, you know, there's only one potential buyer for it, so it's whatever he's willing to pay. And if the seller doesn't want to sell it for that price, then it's not going to sell.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Page?
I don't, I would like to make a motion, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
I have one more question before that.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes. You ask your question, then you make your motion.
My question is for Shane and Nick, well, and Andy as well. So with the flood mitigation project, this would, this donation would invoke, my question is, is this going to commit or open up the city to additional, additional costs to a project that we hadn't initially been slated, or we'd always known that it needed, but that, will it commit us to more money?
I would say it could. I think we would have to look into more what we want to do in that area. In the meantime, I think what we would do is receipt the money and put it in our storm drain fund, which is where we purchased this property from. And it would stay in there until we, I don't know if there's a timeline on us having to complete this project. I think we would just need to allocate it to this area, which we would do. So if there's nothing imminent, I don't think we would need to go forward until we have something ready and...
And a follow-up question to that, is the addition, the initial $25,000 that comes for the purchase of the land, I assume that just goes to our general fund?
Well, I think the property was purchased, like I said, with storm drains, so we might want to just put both of that, both of those in storm, I think that would be the most appropriate thing to do.
So our net increase is $50,000 to our storm drain fund?
Which, but I think the other 25, we could use on whatever, any other projects, or curb gutter, that kind of thing.
Interesting.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember, sorry, Page?
Well, I move that we adopt the agreement for the sale of surplus property between Kaysville City and Owen Fisher, Resolution 18-2-5.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been Councilmember Garn. Any comments?
I would like the people to know, because it's their property, there is a, there is a cash offer that exceeds the $25,000 cash element of this. I do not believe I'm overstepping the other bidder. There were two bidders. I don't believe I'm overstepping his bounds by saying that. But the, no strings attached cash offer is greater, so we are obligating ourselves with half of it to a project that may or may not need to be done, and a project that perhaps this is spurring, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Garn?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes three to two. Thank you. All right. We will go to 4C, consideration of an ordinance amending Section 17-1-9 amendments of Chapter 17-1, general provisions of Title 17, planning and zoning of the revised ordinances of Kaysville City providing for repealer. Do I need to read all of this? Okay, that's good enough. All right, thank you. All right.
The title's probably longer than the substance.
Okay.
This is merely amending our ordinance to require the 500-foot noticing on rezone applications for the public hearing. You've asked us to do that approximately a year ago. We've been doing that as a matter of policy. This actually makes it ordinance. The one other issue that it does do is by state code, it said either mail direct mailers as your ordinance directs, or you post it in the paper. So this eliminates the state requirement to publish it in a newspaper.
Okay. All right, thank you, Andy. All right, we will now open the public hearing, and we have David Saunders.
I just had a question, although you may not be able to answer it right now. It says there's no fiscal impact, but I would argue that if they're going to have an application fee in, it's going to have to change in order to cover this. It would be useful to have that here, so that way we, as citizens, would know what that is before it went into ordinance.
Thank you. All right. All right. Councilmember questions?
When will that, when will that fee be decided on, whatever the amount will be?
At this point, we will review that fee and suggest it when we adopt a new fee schedule with the upcoming budget.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to amend ordinance number 18-2-2, as described.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilmember Garn and seconded by Councilmember Barber. Any comments at this time?
Forgive me if this is rhetorical, Andy, or Shane, whoever wants to answer, but on this fee, let's say that it's something really simple, not a, not a big development like the preserve, per se. You know, that's got profits or whatever, and, you know, is a big business move. What if it's somebody who's just saying, "Hey, I want to have a home occupation," you know, or smaller stuff? Are we, are we, are we going to be sensitive towards that with the fee?
This ordinance is only pertinent to rezones.
Okay. So if it's a minor rezone of, let me take out the home occupation, if it's a minor rezone, we got one coming up in a minute, if they had to pay a couple, you know, $1,000 in postage.
Yes. We'll look at various ways. So if it's a rezone of one lot, 500 feet may impact 10 properties, as opposed to, for example, the preserve we reviewed, about 150 mailers went out. Clearly significant difference. So we're going to figure out how to make that fair.
Yeah, because if you had that one lot smack dab in the middle of the preserve that does have 150 homes around it, you know, that one guy wanting a rezone on his lot's got to pay for all that, the same price as a developer for a huge impact, but, so, if we work that out, hopefully, you know, like, it could be like the 369 plan, you know, on the road fee for businesses. I think there ought to be bulk categories for that. Somehow, we recognize that issue.
Thank you, thank you. All right. If we are ready to vote, we'll start with Councilmember Garn.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Motion passes 5-0. Next is request to rezone approximately half an acre of property at approximately 2030 South Parkwood Lane from RA Residential Agricultural to R120 Single Family Residential, et cetera.
With your permission, I'd like to describe the next two items in the same report, as they're highly related. The one is to rezone the property, and the other is to subdivide it into a one-lot subdivision. Property's located down off the new Parkwood Lane, just south of Shepherd Lane. The King family owns a significant property in this area. They have need to build one house for a family member. Therefore, they would like to break off, for their reasons, the smallest amount possible in this area. It was recommended by staff that R120 is the smallest zone that would be reasonably approved, based on past history. So they've requested R120 for this 20,000-square-foot lot, which would then be followed immediately by a subdivision plat for a one-lot subdivision to make that a buildable area. As you can see in the zoning map, there's R1LD and RA abutting it. There is R120 in the area. Planning Commission had some discussion over whether this should go to, as a single lot, R120. They ultimately approved it with, I believe, a four-to-one vote. The real question is, is R120 zone compatible with the other uses in the area? So both the plat and the rezone were recommended, I believe with one dissenting vote in each case. Staff has no major concerns with either of these.
Okay, all right. We will not have a public hearing on this item, or the next, because we don't have anybody signed up for that. So we'll move right on to council questions. If you have any council questions. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you. Is that, I got my mailer. Wait, that's not a question, sorry. Is that, there's a fence there. Do you know who owns the fence, and have they talked to that?
Which fence are you talking about?
It's going to face Parkwood Lane, is that correct?
There is a fence along Parkwood Lane. They would have to encroach through that fence to access this property.
And just, do you know who owns it?
I believe the subdivision put it up when they built that road.
Okay, have they just visited? That's all I want to know, have they visited with the subdivision to make sure?
Yeah, and that was at the request of this property owner. That was a negotiated deal between those two.
Okay, so it's, all right, that's what I, okay?
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the first, the request to rezone.
I'll make a motion that, that we approve the request to rezone this item.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Councilmember Adams and seconded by Councilmember Page. Any comments? Councilmember Garn?
So, does this also, the motion didn't include preliminary and final plat? I guess we'll make that in a separate motion?
That's correct. It should be two motions, one to rezone as legislative motion, preliminary, final plat, and administrative motion.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping us keep that separate, Nick, in our meetings.
Councilmember Barber?
I have a process question, if that's okay. Is it for a rezone and preliminary and final plat, for them to come at the same time? I just haven't seen this very often. Usually, it seems like the rezone comes, discussion, and then we have a follow-up with the...
We're making two motions.
In the same meeting, though, so that, I'm just asking, is that?
I think it's a little bit of an accelerated process from what you'll typically see, and I think typically, it'll involve smaller subdivisions. In this case, it's a half acre, I believe.
Yeah, definitely.
And that's something where, when it's one of those, I guess, for lack of a better term, no-brainer type things, then it's appropriate. The rezone needs to come first, though, so that the plat can then be...
Given the appropriate...
Given the right zoning.
So it's, is it, is it a staff decision when you look at a proposal that comes in, whether, how big it is, whether it breaks up the zoning, and then the plats will come at a, at a follow-up meeting?
Andy could probably speak better than that if he'd like to, but I think that is, the staff would always like to see this plats and everything handled as efficiently as possible.
Absolutely.
And so that's what we always try to do, I believe. Andy, anything further?
Yes, many times, the council likes to know what the product's going to be as a result of the rezone. So frequently, there is a plat that accompanies a rezone request.
Okay, thanks. That was just for my...
Some staff members believe you shouldn't even be seeing preliminary or final plat at all.
That, that once we approve the rezone, we see that all.
It would go just to be an administrative decision, probably by the planning commission.
Are you speaking for yourself?
Myself and several others, yeah.
That is, that is good to know. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I wonder how many West Kaysville people are, never thought they would hear that a half acre doesn't fit in with the surroundings of R1LD, or doesn't fit the surroundings of West Kaysville. The irony of your, and it was, you know, it's a harmless statement. It's not your statement you made. You're echoing planning commission's statement, but isn't that ironic?
Anyway, okay. Any other comments? Okay, let's start the vote. Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Just a thanks to the Kings for the R120. Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes 5-0. I would now entertain a motion for the preliminary plat and final plat.
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary and final plat approval for the King subdivision.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Barber and seconded by Councilmember Adams. Any comments? All right, we'll start the vote. Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion, oh, thank you. Council, motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We are going to, we are now done with our action items. We're going to take a five-minute break, so get back here at 8:55, please.